And welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, January 9, 2014 Business Meeting. I hope you all had a great holiday out there. We certainly did. We've had a break from business meetings since about the middle of December, so it's our first one back. There's not a lot of action in this particular one, but there's appropriate things we have to take care of. And I ask Mr. Krupp, our county administrator, to take the role.
Well, certainly, and Happy New Year to everyone. Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Here. I might add that Commissioner Smith and Schrader are out of the office today. So, thank you, and would you all please rise with me and do the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anybody who wants to give Citizen Communication, you best turn in your cards soon. I'll call you up in twos. They are Steve Bates and Les Poole.
It's a whole new year, isn't it? But, of course, we've got some of last year's problems dragging along, and one of them is the library situation. There's a lot of research going on with what's with the plan to close the Oak Grove Library and build a library in Gladstone to serve the entire community of basically three communities, Jennings Lodge, Oak Grove, and Gladstone. I understand that the county wants to not be in a position of administering and caring for a library, and that when the taxing district was approved in 2008, the intent was to close libraries in the unincorporated communities, and that's happened. Considerable amount of money was provided for various cities, including Happy Valley, Gladstone, certainly Milwaukee, to improve their capabilities and obviously absorb the residents from the unincorporated area. Where the problem exists, as you all know, it's been well documented, is that in Gladstone, a decision was made when money was a little looser, I would say money was a lot looser, to invest well in the excess of $10 million for what many would term was a Taj Mahal. And that has been voted down. Who knows where that's going? But in that process, members of Gladstone Council and unfortunately the mayor did not listen to the citizens. And what that created was a divide. And you'd never think a library would divide a community, but when things get polarized, things smaller than libraries can divide a community. And we've seen a lot of that with what happened in Damascus, an amazing fiasco that really is somewhat like what occurred in Milwaukee with Light Rail. So, I thought over the holidays a few times about what I call reruns. And as a political historian and a history buff who has so many archives that it would probably take me 6,000, 8,000 hours to go through them and share them with you. And if I did that, I'd have to bring a truck with me. And I'm not saying that to tout myself. I'm saying that to reassure everyone that I've been here for two and a half years, almost nonstop, bringing a message from the citizens that we want improved involvement, we've got issues out there with money that everyone is nervous about. And as the commission moves forward and we move forward, I hope we continue to have improved dialogue and improved citizen input so that regardless of the outcome, regardless of the outcome, the citizens feel they've been heard. And I appreciate your time as always. If I had any time left, I'd donate it to Richard Langdon.
A brief comment about the library happening down there. I think sometimes they don't create a divide, it exposes a divide that was already there. And money issues have a way of bringing all that forward. I have encouraged several individuals down there from various sides to get into a room, sort this out, either establish guidelines as to where they each are at and the separation from the same, or come together on a mutual course of action. As you know, this commission has given a deadline. We have not yet officially answered that, but the deadline is that the after Gladstone's already gone through over a million, well, nearly a million and a half dollars, we have back some a million, and they will get it when they decide on the course of action. We don't have a Plan B for that area. Right now, the Oak Grove Library is open, and we have not closed that one. It's the only one remaining, as you said, Mr. Poole. But, you know, we don't have a course of action should this not all come together for Gladstone. So my hopes are that they can come to some kind of agreement. I think that hope is shared by this commission. Soon would be better. Thank you. Mr. Bates?
Happy New Year. Chair Ludlow and Commissioner Bernard and Savis, I'm here representing the Boring Community Planning Organization, giving a report of the actions that are meeting last Tuesday evening. As you are aware, the Boring Community has had study and discussion concerning the metro boundaries that split Boring in half. Half of Boring is in metro and half of Boring is outside. During the past several months during the study and discussion period, we've determined that there are things that we need to look at for our future. And the people at the Boring Community Planning Organization last Tuesday night actually cast ballots. They, on the ballot, there were three choices: one to do nothing, one to support a petition for withdrawal from metro, and the third was to take a stance of annexing all of Boring into metro. Seventy percent of the votes cast were in favor of a petition or endorsing a petition for withdrawal of Boring from metro. I'm here to present to you, you have in front of you, a copy of the chief petitioner's statement, and that's on the backside, and on the front side of what you have is a position statement that was also adopted Tuesday evening. The Boring Community Planning Organization took a position statement enlisting the help of the Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners, state representatives Bill Kennermer, Mark Johnson, and Shamia Fagan, state senators Allen Olson and Chuck Thompson, to support the introduction and passage of a bill to change state law that will change the boundaries of metro, which would exclude all of Boring from the metro boundaries. And with that, I thank you for this time, for this presentation. You have everything that I wanted you to see. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Chair, I just have a comment. My comments along the lines of I have talked to some of the folks in Boring, and I think there's been expressed some interest into looking at incorporating Boring perhaps. And if they were to do just that, they would need to put together a comprehensive plan. I think it'd be very complex and difficult for them to plan for half the city comprehensive plan within metro guidelines and the other half outside. So I think that it's relevant, and I support some determination as to, you know, but dividing that community if they're looking at or considering incorporation, trying to divide that community in the two different comprehensive plan models should they incorporate, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So, I support the will of the folks out there to aspire to be who they want to be.
Thank you.
Mr. Bates, a couple of things. One, so you are sending this to the legislators that represent the Boring area, correct?
That is correct. In fact, I have been in touch with Bill Kennermer's office, Representative Kennermer's office. In fact, I had a very long conversation with them yesterday morning, and we're looking at the strategies. We're not sure if we're going to be able to do anything this legislative session, but of course for the 2015 session, we definitely would have a bill that we could work through the system.
And so, other than metro voluntarily agreeing with your desire, the majority of desire, the only other way you agree is to go through the state legislature who basically created metro, great?
That is correct. And actually, our petition is addressed both to the metro council and the state legislature as a whole.
As you know, from the moment I started visiting out there, before I was elected actually, I talked about maybe the best bump model was to, as Mr. Savis has said, become a city. As you know, I'll be at your CPO this next time with a staff member to talk about pros and cons of becoming a city. But, you know, we always talk about self-determination, and you know, who has the right to be self-determinative? And certainly that group, that very large group you have out there is, they should have help direct where their future is. Now, when you say the Boring area in this petition, is that by zip code, by a specific meets and bounds description, or by a road?
The Boring Community Planning Organization has referred to the Boring community as all the area within the Boring CPO boundaries. There are other areas that have Boring Oregon 97009 zip codes, such as the Cotrell area, which is outside of the area that we're discussing. They're also outside of the metro boundaries.
And I'm sure you'll receive some advice from Mr. Kennermer, or Representative Kennermer, on that as far as taking it to the full legislature, they're going to, you've certainly got to adhere to some kind of guidelines. Well, we, I appreciate you coming forward today, and again, I appreciate that you are one of the most successful and well-attended CPOs in Clackamas County, and I hope that continues.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next we have Mr. Krupp, a presentation?
Yes, this first item is a traditional first-of-the-year duty for the Board of County Commissioners, and that's the selection of the vice chair for the 2014 year.
Yeah, we talked about this in a study session, and I'll make it official, but I move Martha Schrader be vice chair in 2014 of this board.
Second.
Remove the second of discussion? All right. Mary?
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye.
Passes three zero. Okay, next.
Okay, this next presentation is to acknowledge that this is the 100th year anniversary for the Canby Ferry Crossing, and I'm going to invite Barbara Cartmill, our interim director of Transportation and Development, to give you a presentation.
Good morning. Thanks very much. I'm very excited to be here to talk about the Canby.
Phone on?
It is. Bright green light looking back at me.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Lot of reading here this morning, so I've got a cup of lemon juice to make sure I can articulate it. I don't think they've arrived yet, so I want to start out by acknowledging a couple of our staff members, Sam Irving, the manager of transportation maintenance, and Terry Learfield, the transportation maintenance supervisor, who has responsibility for managing the Canby Ferry. It is out there in among our road system, considered a transportation mode. I'd also like to thank Bev Doolittle, who's with the Canby Chamber, and the City of Canby as well, for partnering in our efforts to recognize the ferry's centennial. 1914, wow. The Panama Canal opened, Henry Ford introduced the first assembly line to make the Model T Ford, World War I began, and favorite of mine, the first red and green traffic lights were installed in all places, Cleveland, Ohio. And of course, in Clackamas County, the first ferry began carrying people and vehicles across the Willamette River between Canby and Wilsonville. Throughout 2014, Clackamas County, the City of Canby, and many others will celebrate and commemorate this historic milestone, and everyone is invited to join in. Events will be scheduled every month to mark the ferry's 100th anniversary. Watch the Canby Ferry website, which is going on to the Clackamas website, www.clackamas.us, and then going to roads, and then to the ferry, for information about special events, and learn more about the ferry with the Canby Ferry trivia quiz that'll be in each issue of the Citizen News. If you listen carefully to my presentation, the answers to the trivia questions will be included. In July of 1914, the first Canby Ferry was purchased in Newburgh by the mayor of Canby, W.H. Blair, and Harry B. Evans, from the Canby Business Men's Club. The first ferryman was Clem Dollar, who received $10 a month from the city. Few clues there. In 1916, a new gas-driven ferry cost $228. I think our slide shows it actually came in $22 under budget. It was allocated for $250. In January of 1946, the ferry was destroyed when it was swept from its moorings in a flood. Pieces of the poor ferry went over the Willamette Falls. Then, in 1952, the Canby Chamber and Lions Club presented Clackamas County with 8,000 signatures seeking restoration of the ferry service. The county commission approved construction of a new ferry.
I'm taking notes, you're going way too fast.
Oh. I tried to go slow on the important points.
I'm just kidding.
So, the commission approved construction of a new ferry, and a new Canby ferry, the third one, was launched and christened the MJ Lee, after Millard Jerome Lee, the first child born in Canby in 1872, two years after the town was platted. This is a little cumbersome, so, but it's important. Ora Lee Catley, the daughter of Canby's first mayor, Herman A. Lee, and the granddaughter of Philander and Anna Green Lee, who settled the area in 1847, settled in Canby in 1847, actually performed the ceremony. There is a lot of history around the naming and the Canby Ferry itself of Clackamas County. It was not until 1986 that people were charged for using the ferry. A one-way toll was a dollar. In 1995, the 43-year-old ferry failed the Coast Guard safety inspection, and the county contracted to replace it. In February of 1996, the ferry closed due to severe flooding and remained closed during the rebuilding of the ferry docks. A new six-passenger ferry went into service in 1997 and cost approximately $900,000, as opposed to $228, some 60 years prior. And it was christened the MJ Lee II by Doris Catley Martin, a descendant of the original MJ Lee. Just this past year, in 2013, the ferry was renovated and retrofitted with a new propulsion system with funds from a federal grant. So, somewhere in my notes, oh, here it is. Does anybody remember how much we paid Clem Dollar to run the first ferry?
$10.
Yay!
A month. She read good notes.
You did. So with that, I'd like to proceed with the proclamation. Proclaiming 2014 as the Canby Ferry Centennial Celebration Year in Clackamas County. Whereas, the Canby Ferry began taking travelers across the Willamette River between Canby and Wilsonville in 1914, and whereas, the Canby Ferry is one of only three remaining ferries in the state of Oregon, where there were once hundreds of ferries. And whereas, the Canby Ferry provides year-round transportation service to commuters, businesses, tourists, bicyclists, pedestrians, and area residents seven days a week from 6:45 a.m. to 9:15 p.m. And whereas, community support for the Canby Ferry remains strong, as shown in results of a 2012 survey of ferry riders and the general public, in which more than 90% of the respondents urged the county to continue operating the ferry and supported increased fares to do so. And whereas, the Canby Ferry is both living history and a modern, practical way for people to travel quickly and inexpensively across the Willamette River. And whereas, this year marks the 100th anniversary of the first Canby Ferry crossing in 1914, the Department of Transportation and Development is partnering with Public and Government Affairs, Tourism and Cultural Affairs, the Canby Chamber of Commerce, and the City of Canby, to commemorate this historic milestone with special events and programs throughout 2014. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners declares the year 2014 to be the Canby Ferry Centennial Celebration Year in Clackamas County. We encourage all citizens to join us in celebrating this historical celebration.
Commissioner Bernard?
I move we proclaim 2014 as Canby Ferry Centennial Celebration Year in Clackamas County, and that the ferrymen wear clothes of 1914, period, period. Just kidding on that part.
I'll stank at the first half.
Yeah, exactly. Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Savis. Discussion, I want to ask where, you know, I know the Wheatland Ferry still operates, but you said there's three, where's the third one? You're supposed to know these things.
I know. Well, my help is here. There's Terry Learfield.
Come here and tell us, because I'm really interested in where that is.
Bonavista and Wheatland.
You've got to come up here.
Yes, to come up to the mic.
You've got to come up to the microphone. Does people want to hear what you have to say? Buena, was it Bueno or Bonavista?
I am Terry Learfield, I manage Canby Ferry.
Got to get the microphone, that's the desire.
Transportation Maintenance.
Sit, have a seat. There you go. Pull that thing towards you.
It's a painful process.
Somebody's got to do it.
I'm Terry Learfield from Transportation Maintenance, and I supervise the Canby Ferry. I've been doing it since Darryl Burnham's retirement, July 1st, so I'm taking over with the proclamation, the celebration. So it's been pretty exciting, working with the Chamber of Commerce, with Canby, and with Clackamas County to get this going. So, the question was, how many ferries do we have still in operation? There's three. It's the Canby Ferry, the Wheatland Ferry, and Bonavista. Those two are in Marion County, and one's south of Salem, and one's just a little bit north of Salem.
On the Willamette, right?
On the Willamette.
And it's Bonavista? I've never been across that one.
Bonavista, yes.
Three in the whole state?
Yeah, well, there's actually another half one. It's on the Columbia River, but it's based in Washington.
Yeah, it's kind of an interesting one. And it's smaller and a little more scary on the Columbia, but it's a good one. Well, I want to tell my Canby Ferry story. When I was mayor of Wilsonville, I was a real estate broker, and we had a big parking lot, and in pulls the Oscar Meyer Wienermobile. Now, I was real excited, because, you know, I mean, it was a really cool machine. So I went out and talked to those guys, and I said, hey, you know, you're going, what are you doing? Young people that they hired every summer to drive these few at that time in 1990 around Oscar Meyer Wienermobiles. So, I said, listen, I've got a great idea, it's kind of a publicity thing, and I'm wondering if you don't mind, if we just go ahead and take it down to the Canby Ferry, and then I will call the local newspaper and have them show up for a picture of the Oscar Meyer Wienermobile on the Canby Ferry. They agreed to that, in fact, they let me drive that thing. And I had a chauffeur's license, a commercial one, so I drove that thing down from the Westland side, so to speak, down there, and you should have seen the eyes of the operator of that ferry when he saw us parked up there. And we waited our turn, but we took the whole ferry too. It wasn't any six-person thing there. So I will have to pull that picture out of archives and give it to the Historical Society, because it's kind of a classic to have said, you know, we took that Wienermobile across the MJ Lee. But anyway, further discussion about the Canby Ferry proclamation. I might add, we don't do many proclamations. This is the first one since this board's been seated that we've done.
Oh, just a little pun. It seems like Chair Ludlow relishes this memory.
Oh, man.
Hot dog.
Oh, go ahead, you guys.
I'm diggity dog.
See, we're good spirits, we've had a little time off. This will change. No. All right, any further actual discussion on this? Don't pun-ish me, but any further discussion? Otherwise, Mary, take the poll, please.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes three zero. Thank you very much, it's a great proclamation.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Krupp?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have a public hearing. This is to consider a resolution to adopt fees for small claims mediation services through Clackamas County Resolution Services, and I'm going to invite Lauren McNeil, our director of Resolution Services, up to present this item to you.
I think the closer the better with that microphone.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, my.
Much better.
Yeah.
Good morning, Chair Ludlow, Commissioner Bernard, Commissioner Savis. I am Lauren McNeil, I'm the director of Resolution Services, and I'm presenting this resolution to adopt fees for small claims mediation. As you likely recall, when we came to study session, we explained that our goal is to make small claims mediation services sustainable, and we considered a number of different options for funding the service, including having the circuit court attach a fee to the filing fee at the court. This is statutorily prohibited. We also talked to the court about providing some additional funding for the service, and they are not able to do that at this time. The Justice Court is able to provide funding for the cases that are filed at Justice Court, and they are taking small claims cases, but haven't had very many come through their door at this time. So, the revenue that we were anticipating from that source has not materialized in the way that we anticipated. And then, of course, having general fund service, fund fees, general fund dollars to fund this service was another option, or to share the fees, and we ended with the recommendation that a fee of $50 for matters, the smaller of the small claims matters, where the matter in controversy is $2,500 or less, and $90 per side for matters that are $25 to $10,000, matter in controversy. And that is our recommendation, and we prepared the resolution for that purpose. This is not without some controversy, and we do have some staff here, Amy Cleary. We also have in the audience Aaron Ruff and David Bertram, who run the small claims mediation program, so they're here if you have some questions about that as well. And we have one volunteer who works in that program, Diane Barnes, who is here also to share some thoughts with you. So, that is my presentation.
Okay, any questions, commissioners?
I just want to clarify, maybe even make a couple of comments. My viewpoint on this is right now is this service is being provided by the taxpayers currently, and most of the taxpayers in Clackamas County do not use this service. So this is more of a reassignment of the dollars to the user pay model, where the people that actually are receiving the service are paying for the service, and it actually alleviates the taxpayers from supporting this and allows us to use those dollars in other higher priority issues that ideally, the whole, all the taxpayers in Clackamas County will benefit. So it's a relief of property tax in one way and user pay to another. So, I think it's a good model to keep it fiscally sustainable.
Thank you.
Yeah, on that line of questioning, when we went through budget, and I think even since then, we had a presentation by you where we talked about, for your whole department, the amount that has contributed from, that is not from public coffers, so to speak, property taxes. And I believe it was, was it over 60%? Is that correct?
79%.
79%. So we only contribute, the public dollars, 11% currently?
21.
Oh, good, nice math, Ludlow. Yeah, 21%. Okay, well, that's a good model. And this would be sustainable, i.e., Commissioner Savis said it would pay for itself or it wouldn't exist, correct?
That's correct. That's how we've costed it out.
Okay. I think that's the only questions I have currently. So you got off easy, didn't you, so far? Any further questions, Commissioner Bernard? All right, we're going to open the public hearing, and we have one. All right, we're going to open the public hearing, and we have one card, so I'll ask you to, well, actually, I think she might be a friend of this, so you can probably stay there to answer any question you might have. Diane Barnes, please? Come on forward, it's a public testimony portion.
Turn it on. Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Diane Barnes, and I live in Westland, and I'm a volunteer mediator for the Clackamas County Small Claims Court. And I've come to address the fee and just the need for funding. I volunteered with Resolution Services in many forms for a long time. I also volunteer through Multnomah County Small Claims Court, which is approaching its thirtieth year of having volunteer mediators. And I guess the two points I want to bring up is, small claims mediation offers residents an opportunity to sit down and work out a resolution with something getting written up and being public record inside the court. It doesn't get posted if it is settled with a mediator. So if it goes to the judge, it becomes posted public record, meaning that credit agencies can go through that. And I'm just going to give one quick example. Many seniors show up, and, without disclosing any information, with medical issues, husbands pass away, wives end up with small bills, ten thousand or less, that get sent to collections. Collection comes, and if they go to court and win, there's a ten-year ding usually on that party's credit rating, and they have an opportunity to put an additional ten-year ding on it. In mediation, we can come to a resolution, we can set up a payment that lets that person still feel they have come, they're good people, they want to pay their debt, they're in a situation that got out of control in their lives. Fiscally, those people now can be part of our community. They can pay their bills, they can pay this off slowly, they can pay their water bills, their tax bills, all the things they need to do if they have an opportunity to do this through mediation. Ethically, it lets them take a few things back and be part of this community. I have to speak towards the fee in two veins. One, if this is the only way we can support this, I think it's a no-brainer. You have to provide that option to people. It gives them a way to move through a bad situation in a way that serves everybody, both the business, if it's business to business, and it is, or party to party, and it is, or any mixture. I don't like the fee, I volunteer my time, and I've done it for a really long time, and I know we have a seventy-plus success rate, we save the court time, we save litigation time, we give people a way to pay these debts off. So I guess I would like to just throw out that I would like to see the county find some way to also fund this, because there's a huge number of us, if it's a combination of a fee and funding it. I'm a taxpayer, I'm a homeowner, I pay my taxes in Clackamas County, I would like to see some money go towards this, because it serves a great people, for a huge number of people, and it's growing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public testimony at this time? I'll close the public hearing. Now, a quick question on, you know, and we're talking about public funds or not public funds used for this, it also takes money for the complainant to file a small claims action, correct?
That is correct.
Do you have an idea on how much that is?
That is fifty dollars also.
So they got to pay fifty?
Fifty-three, actually, I think, no.
And if they prevail, they get that back?
There is a prevailing party fee that is awarded.
Right, so they get that back. But that prevailing party fee is equal to that which they spent there, or that which they spent?
One hundred dollars, correct?
That's what I was going to say, is the fifty for the filing, and then, let's say they use this service, basically, they get remunerated for that to equal a hundred dollars, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You know, one of the things we certainly talk about during budget time is self-sustainability, that is, you know, bringing in the income. I think, the department, I think, I recall, that has least self-sustaining is actually our planning department, and rightfully so, because, you know, it's not, you can't charge the fees necessary to take care of all that. I might add that, you know, it may seem inexpensive to have those rooms back there, which you have, by the way, and quite a few of them, but, you know, one of the things that our staff is certainly sensitive to, sensitive to is allocated costs. Now, those include computer, telephone, heat, upkeep, maintenance, so it includes a lot of different things, and a lot of our departments pay a lot of money for that. In fact, H3 Health Housing Human Services pays over seven million dollars every year for allocated costs. So yours is not different from that, and so there is actually a cost of using that room and using the telephones, computers, et cetera. And unfortunately, we have to recover that when we can. So, Commissioner, what are your wishes?
Chair, I do have one question for staff, and that is, what is the total amount we anticipate deriving from this fee, which is offsetting that general fund contribution?
Fifty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
So, in essence, we're relieving the taxpayers of a fifty-four thousand dollar expense, expenditure?
Correct.
Okay.
Good point. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Chair Ludlow, I move we approve resolution, the resolution adopting fees for small claim mediation services through the Clackamas County Resolution Services Office.
Second?
Motion made by Commissioner Savis, seconded by Commissioner Bernard, in regards to the resolution before us today. Any further discussion?
Glad we can actually cut the cost to our ratepayers in early 2014.
Mary?
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes three zero. Consent agenda, Mary?
The consent agenda. Under Health Housing and Human Services, approval of the Agency Services Amendment Number One with the Oregon City Pioneer Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents, approval to apply for the Oregon Community Foundation's Oregon Partnering Education Collaboration Regional Grant, approval to apply for the Oregon Department of Education Youth Development Division 2014-2016 Community Investment Request for Proposal, approval of Amendment Number Two to the Sub-Award Agreement from Providence Health and Services of Oregon for Intensive Transition Team Project Grant Funding, under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, and request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to accept a DUII Overtime Enforcement Grant with the Oregon State Sheriff's Association, under Administration, approval of Amendment Number One to the Intergovernmental Lease between Clackamas County and the State of Oregon Northwest Willamette Research and Extension Center, and under the Development Agency, approval of an immediate opportunity fund agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Transportation for the CAPS Road Property, also known as the Clackamas Industrial Area Opportunity Site, for funds to construct the southeast 120th Avenue Extension Road Project. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Savis to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes three zero. I may make a note today, this is the first time since at least the year 2000, there have been three men on this commission holding a meeting, and I just want to be able to report to Martha and to you, we did good. Maybe, I'll have them review this, but it's really interesting to have a three-person board, because in order for any action to pass here today, it needs full, three full votes. And so we've gotten through it very well, only because it's a vanilla agenda, so to speak. All right, Mary, or excuse me, not Mary, it's County Administrator.
Well, yes, Mr. Chair, and I actually have a number of items to share with you for the beginning of the year. One of the items is, as you know, during the course of the past two weeks, during the holiday period, the Board of County Commissioners authorized the County Administrator to execute contractual agreements during that period, time the board was not meeting. And in the interest of transparency and accountability, I wanted to share with you and the public at large, the agreements that I did sign and execute during that particular period of time. There were four of them, and they were all intergovernmental agreements. One was on behalf of the Juvenile Department, and this was with the Oregon Health Authority for Behavioral Rehabilitation Services. This is really our agreement with the state to be reimbursed for shelter care services for youth. The second intergovernmental agreement was on behalf of Community Corrections, and this involved an agreement with the State of Oregon Parks and Recreation Department to provide and to be reimbursed for our inmate work group services. The third was on behalf of the Sheriff's Office, and this was an intergovernmental equipment loan agreement, which allows the Oregon Department of Transportation to loan to the county scales for our use in our commercial carrier enforcement program. This will allow the weighing of commercial vehicles. And then finally, also on behalf of the Sheriff's Office, a memorandum of understanding with the Oregon Department of Transportation that provides to us real-time online access to data to help support our commercial carrier enforcement program. So I wanted to make sure you were aware that those were the agreements I signed on the commission's behalf during that period of time.
We're all okay with that, Don, well done.
All righty, yeah, I didn't change my employment agreement during that period. I thought that might not be too particularly prudent. So I do have a couple of other items. One is, is I really wanted to express words of thanks and congratulations to our finance and grant teams in our finance department for completing the 2012-2013 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report by the deadline of December 31st, which is actually quite a stellar achievement to actually meet that deadline. It's not just the work that the finance department staff do, but it's actually every office and department throughout county government is involved and has a role in helping to assemble this report. And this report reports on not just county operations, but also our special service districts as well. So it's a really good example of everybody working together to meet our obligations to show the work that we're doing with being good shepherds of county financial resources. I got one more item to share, and this is something that I thought I should use this opportunity to let folks know, that in the next couple of weeks, the Department of Transportation has announced that there will be traffic closures along a portion of Interstate 205, and this involves the construction project of the new bridge, Interstate 205, over the, well, part of the Sunrise project in that location, near 82nd Drive. And so on Friday, January the 10th, and Saturday, January the 11th, from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, the northbound lanes of 205 in that vicinity, near Exit 13, will be detoured off at 82nd Avenue towards Sunnyside Road, and then back onto the freeway. Then the following week, on January 17th and Saturday, January 18th, also from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, the southbound lanes will be similarly affected, and traffic will be diverted off at Sunnyside Road and routed back over 82nd, back onto 205. It's helpful to know that, as we know, 205 is frequently subjected to congested periods of time, even in the late and early morning hours from time to time, it's a heavily used corridor. So I wanted to share that for folks. The announcement is also listed on our website as well.
Good enough. For those traveling either way, because evidently they're going to close it both ways at different times, an alternate pathway is Sunny Brook, because Sunnyside has its own concerns and lots of lights, but if you shoot through to Sunny Brook, it should be less of a way, certainly less traffic lights, and decent intersections where those meet 82nd specifically, let alone the freeway accesses. So Sunny Brook is also an opportunity, rather than Sunnyside, they certainly run parallel. Commissioners' concerns and or communications, Commissioner Bernard?
Well, last night I had the opportunity to sit in at Martha Schrader at Empac, one of my favorite tasks. Metro does actually provide a valuable service in their extensive analysis, which sometimes I think is overly extensive. But one of the interesting things about Clackamas County was that over the next thirty years, population is anticipated to grow about twenty percent in, about a million in population in the metro region. But one of the interesting facts is that Clackamas County population of people from the age eighteen to sixty-four will be down three percent. That's minus six thousand five hundred and fifty-seven people in Clackamas County. Only two counties in the state will experience that. And what's that mean? That means that our senior population will be much higher than most counties in the state. There are thirty-six counties, and there are only two that will experience this reduction. It's significant. Portland's growth of eighteen to sixty-four-year-olds is quite high, as well as Washington counties, and probably a lot of that has to do with the job market. And, you know, I think it also has to do with housing, how we invest in our future housing stock that Clackamas County provides, or senior facilities, and how we help those senior facilities grow. So I think it's important to note that Clackamas County has had a great shift. Some of that has to do with transportation access, and because Clackamas County is more limited than other areas of the state, I mean, of the metro region, which will see most of that growth, it has lost a lot of those youths who once came here. Clackamas County's a great place to live, work, and play, but the fact that the people who, when I remember when I got my driver's license, I was there the day I was sixteen. And now lots of kids have waited, are waiting until they're in their twenties to get cars. For one thing, it's expensive, car insurance, just having the money to pay for cars is extremely challenging. Ted Wheeler spoke at our Rotary Meeting yesterday, and he says that, you know, the pace of the economy is improving, but the problem is, is that a lot of those people who have graduated from college are not getting jobs in the region, and in many cases, in the entire country. Instead, a lot of the service jobs, the lower-paying jobs, hotel, motel, restaurants, all those businesses have increased their employment, but the ones that are paying the big dollars are not doing that. So I, you know, Clackamas County has a lot of work to do to make sure that we provide opportunities for high-tech companies to move into Clackamas County and build facilities. And I think the fact that we recently completed our BTOP program, which is the cable that we've, what's it called?
Dark fiber.
The dark fiber that we put around the county will open up greater opportunities in Clackamas County that other communities do not have. I think that you'll see in Estacada and some industrial areas, and perhaps out in Borning, where there are industrial opportunities, greater access to internet will draw folks into those areas. So I, and Canby also, in case I didn't mention it. So I look forward to the discussion about how we're going to retain those folks from eighteen to sixty-four in Clackamas County, and in fact, attract them, because those are the people we need to grow our businesses. The entrepreneurs that start new businesses will come from that age group. So I look forward to also when we talk about our housing opportunities, how can we create opportunities that would attract those folks into Clackamas County? So that's it, thank you. Happy New Year.
Commissioner Savis?
Thank you, Chair. Before I kind of get into my comments, I just wanted to do a little bit of housekeeping, and that was, the December 19th meeting, myself and Commissioner Schrader indicated our wishes to have, at the January 16th meeting, have a public hearing and some board discussion on the AMR ambulance contract. And we both expressed that, and I know the Chair has been very kind in offering that any commissioner can bring something forth. any Commissioner can bring something forth. And I just, my question is, knowing that the agenda gets set shortly after this meeting, my question to the Chair is, will that happen for January 16th, knowing that that's our only night meeting in January?
Well, let's get this out in the open. The Board rules say that in the event the Chair refuses to put something on the agenda, then two Commissioners can do so. I've always said, it takes one. Each of these Commissioners are duly elected. They have the right to put something on the agenda. Nobody has asked me, I guess until now, to put this on the agenda or not. So I take that as a request. Now, what can you put on the agenda? Can you put a hearing? Can two Commissioners decide that a hearing should happen? And I believe Mr. Madcor is going to answer that as no. So is it the desire of the majority of this Commission to have a public hearing on this matter? I don't believe it is. This is not a popularity contest. This is not the most likely to succeed in high school. This is the biggest contract, other than building, a huge building, which we've done before, including this one, that we will have before us. It's a long-term contract. It's very expensive, and it lacks, in this particular case, competition. Now, Mr. Madcor, would you answer the question as to whether two Commissioners can place a public hearing?
Our code specifies that the Chair does set the agenda. A Commissioner can request that an item be placed on an agenda, and if the Chair protests, then two Commissioners can essentially insist that it be placed on an agenda. Whether it rises to the level of requiring a public hearing is something that's relatively unclear and probably not warranted by just the two Commissioners. You could ask for it to be a discussion item or a consent agenda, but in terms of public hearings, those are items that are required by statute or local code. And discussion of a contract does not require a public hearing.
Okay. And I know that we have had, we use those words, "public hearing," when in the technical form of law, public law, public process, that this is not really a hearing per se, because we are not passing anything at this point in time. It's more of a discussion. So I did hesitate with those words, because they have been used before in a public hearing where we, in kind, did something very similar, which was really not a formality, you know, and I can name those, but I won't. So knowing that that's been a practice, I thought I would use those same terms. But if, for clarity's sake, it's a public discussion, then that's what I, I will modify my request to the public discussion, so give the opportunity to the public to voice their opinion on this. It's been a very, kind of a period of time where we've had several meetings, and there has been really no opportunity for public discussion or education on where we are with this matter. And knowing that there's so much public support and so many people that have reached out and wanted to comment, I think that they ought to be given the opportunity in a more formal way, in a more organized way. So I request, modify my request for a public discussion on the agenda and with a brief staff presentation on the January 16th evening meeting of this year.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, I frankly, in five years, cannot remember a single time we didn't allow an opportunity for people to comment or discuss a particular issue. We've had this, we've had meetings on this where large numbers of ambulance folks, citizens testified, commented on this, and at no time was there ever a restriction on how many people could testify. We had one very long meeting that I remember on this particular issue. So I, you know, it's certainly available at any time for people to comment. There are a couple of folks out here today who had the opportunity to comment, having turned, in turning it in a blue card. I'm perfectly satisfied with having a discussion, but I don't see what the difference is between the public comment, because we discuss this every week just about. Frankly, at some point very soon, I hope that we will have a decision to do something on this contract, to throw things off the table or to leave things on the table, and I hope that'll happen soon.
I believe that, Mr. Krupp, the session, and we've been waiting for us to assemble all Commissioners in fairness to the process, but what date is it we have our next study session on this item?
We have a study session on the ambulance contract issue scheduled for the 21st of this month.
Okay. I am absolutely sure that I'll be able to write down, if we had a public discussion, everything that everybody's going to say, because as Commissioner Bernard has said, we've heard it before. There still are some things to be, either negotiated or not, on this. I feel very strongly that there is a three-person majority of this Commission that does not want to have a public discussion on the agenda. However, as Commissioner Bernard has said, anybody who wants to come up and give us three minutes at any time, they are welcome to do that on anything that is not on the agenda, and that is not on the agenda in the foreseeable future. Commissioner Savas?
So in response to Commissioner Bernard, you know, what's different? And yes, anyone can come here anytime and speak, but I think what's absent here, so for clarification, what's absent here, similar to the CRC discussion we had early in the year, last year, almost a year ago, we had a brief staff presentation to explain the issue. And I think as much work as we've done for two years or two and a half years on this project, that actually Commissioner Bernard spearheaded bringing this forward, the ambulance contract discussion and renewal and RFP process. So we have not had that discussion, and I think that it would be beneficial for us, knowing that I have heard that on the 22nd or 21st, we're going to have a work session to hear, take that, take what we heard on the 16th, and take that into consideration when we discuss this on the following Tuesday in the work session. It seems logical that if we are truly genuine about public involvement, wanting to hear from them, that we would factor in the sentiments and the opinions of the public and factor that into the following work session. So I'm not asking for a decision on the 16th, but the difference here being a brief staff presentation on where we are, status update, and allow that focused presentation on the 16th. That is the request, and if there is no acceptance of the Chair to honor the previous offer that he has made about a single Commissioner bringing something forward, then I'm sure that myself and Commissioner Schrader perhaps will submit something shortly here, shortly thereafter this meeting, a request to implement the County Ordinance 2.11.070, I believe.
Well, we'll certainly let Mr. Madcor decide that. And I will say very quickly, there has been a lot of public discussion by this Commission on this, a lot of it. If they would want to listen into our work and study sessions on this, it's been discussed a great deal, specifically in November and December, till mid-December, and certainly not till then. We do have something scheduled on this, and I would maintain to you that until we bring this forward and make a preliminary decision to send it on to this business meeting, that some things may change. The staff has done a great job in reporting to us the nuances of this particular submittal by the lone summatee. That continuation of discussion will go on at the meeting that Mr. Krupp decides. Commissioner Bernard?
So I'm just trying to figure out how we normally do this. We normally have, well, I guess under presentations where there'd be a presentation, but one thing I've got to credit the Chair for is that we do have discussions along with the testimony that's given. It used to be one way. It's a discussion. We do have that. I think it's a very complicated issue. Well, all of us will agree, it's a very complicated issue. And, you know, I don't, I guess that for me, if I'm doing a contract negotiation, and the citizens have had more than an opportunity to testify and to listen to our discussions, I don't know what the impact would be. We have made adjustments based on those testimony, on the testimony. Clackamas Fire District Number One kind of got this whole thing going on testimony that they thought we should go out. Different ambulance companies have testified that they thought we should go out, and we did that. We're really close to the negotiation, and my hope is we can end this very soon, hopefully this month, we can complete this. So I think we've had more than adequate public testimony, public input, public adjustments made according to the input, and we're close enough that I think we can make that decision in a work, I mean, we can make a decision to put it on a consent agenda in probably at our next work session, something on the consent agenda at our next work session.
I want to reiterate, this is a blue card. It used to be green for some reason. I don't know why.
It's green for land use.
There you go. It's land use. So we'll stick with blue. Ladies and gentlemen who are watching out there, or just listening or in the audience, any of you can at any time, except for, I have to cut it off eventually, because time goes on, especially on our agenda, but any of you can come forward and give us three minutes on anything you wish that pertains to county business, and that includes the ambulance consideration. Anybody can do this. Now, if you want more information on that contract, I submit that you should go online, and in there is everything we've seen. Also online on the verbal portion on our work and study sessions, there is the discussion by this Commission about how to proceed or not to proceed, about concerns that they have about this contract. This is your public discussion item, right here. Fill it out, you can talk about anything you wish. Commissioner Savas?
Well, Chair, although I appreciate that, I was, I think there are some people that came to the December 19th meeting to want to do just that, but as I recall, the Chair limited that and actually closed or no longer chose to accept anymore of those blue cards that you just held up to the camera. So they didn't have that opportunity, and I thought that was strange, because the Chair has been very open. I got to give credit for the Chair in majority of 2013 for trying to be open and allowing people to speak and to submit blue cards well into the meeting when public testimony was still available. And he's accommodated that. I just thought it was very striking that at the December meeting, December 19th meeting in particular, when there was people to discuss just this very issue, were actually not allowed to by virtue of the card shut off. So I'll take that as a refusal to put that on the agenda, and I will speak to Commissioner Schrader by phone this afternoon, right after this meeting, and go on to my comments. So it's been a year, and a year ago about now, I had a list in my hand of about 150 items that I shared with my Commissioners, I think that were leftover unfinished business in Clackamas County that I had accumulated over a two-year period. Accompanied with that, I had a, I had a two-page little speech somewhat, page and a half, and I had about 12 of those kind of items in general that I kind of touched on. So I just thought it'd be interesting for me to read that here today, and I'd like to be able to say, a year later, we made significant progress in areas, but, you know, I hope we can strive to do that. And so just to kind of lay the groundwork a little bit, the very first one I have on here, and this is the very document I read from the last time, was a strategic plan. And I've been working on trying to get the strategic plan implemented for three years. Three years I've been trying to move on the strategic plan. And on Tuesday, we had a presentation from staff, Mr. Chandler presented to us, and I have a lot of respect for Mr. Chandler. This is not any criticism of Mr. Chandler, but what we heard was, is that we've put an RFP out for $48,000 to basically begin the process. And what I expressed in that meeting afterwards, the questions were, or after that, after his presentation, was, well, what's the next, where's the strategic part? Where's the action plans? Where are all the components that make up a strategic plan? And discussion between himself and the Administrator, myself and my Commissioners, that that might be a year or two out before we accomplish that. And I said, well, geez, I'd really like to see a more aggressive, approach us more aggressively to actually get the strategic part of the plan really done. So I met with Mr. Chandler. We had a great discussion after that work session after lunch. And basically, what that really is, that $48,000 and that RFP with that particular person's going to boil down to is goal-setting, that the strategic elements of that, the actual action plans, aren't even in that contract and may not unless things change, and I'm hoping they do change, that they change, that we actually have the strategic elements of that, that we actually have a strategy. We have, a strategic plan means two things. One is a plan, and one, and two is strategic. And what we have today lacks that, and what we had presented on Tuesday lacks that. So I just think it's just, I, it's not humorous. I don't take, you know, I'd like to say it's humorous, but it's unfortunate that we are at this point in time. So I'll just read off what I read off a year ago. I'm excited to kick this, again, this is 2013, January 2013, January 8th, I believe. I'm excited to kick off this year with our new Commissioners. We have only met as a board for just a few hours now, but as our new Commissioners are beginning to download a tremendous amount of information, I wanted to deliver what I promised. So I'm providing a list, some list of issues, recommended briefings, and some of my priorities. You can call it homework, although it will take weeks and months to get through. You will find well over 100, closer to 150 items and issues. Some of my priorities are develop the strategic plan. Number two, develop a board management model that provides clear policy direction to management. Create, number three, create an action items list and an issues parking list that is to be reviewed on a regular basis by the BCC. The large list I handed out is a starting point. Next one, customer service enhancements. Identify a business agent to act as a liaison for businesses, and also begin recording all inquiries as to appropriate example of what would be the planning permits department. Next, build on the, how do we get the yes resolution? We passed one two years ago. How can we enhance that? Next, introduce fiscal sustainability to all sustainability activities to achieve good fiscal management. Next, adopt and implement fiscal policies that assure we meet our financial and mandated service delivery obligations, what I refer to as fiscally sustainable budgeting and planning with both a one-year and a five-year outlook. We missed that. We didn't get the five-year outlook whatsoever in the budgeting. Next, better engage the budget committees. We did a little bit of that, but not the special, not all the budget committees, simply our quarterly meetings, which we had implemented before. I want to pass a fiscally sustainable budget. I voted for the budgets that were fiscally sustainable in the past. I voted no on the budgets I thought were not. I stated that. We simply kicked the can down the road. And although we passed a financial reserves policy, our underfunded reserves were further depleted. The beauty about what we did do is we did fully, we did fully fund our reserves and contingency policy. So that's one improvement over the years. So I appreciate staff and my Commissioners for doing that. Assure we focus on smaller businesses, especially the micro businesses through the Economic Development Committee, just as we initiated with our outreach to farming, the farming industry. Continue to map and inventory all the employment lands to find ways to assist in their success. Commissioner Bernard earlier spoke to why our population numbers are, of the younger group are diminishing while our older population is growing. He was spot on. We know that's a metric out there. The State of Oregon issued, and I heard it on Monday, the employment numbers for the region, the tri-county region. Turns out that both Washington County and Multnomah County exceeded their employment number recovery from the recession. They're over 100% of that recovery. Clackamas County, we're at 44%. That's not a good showing. Going back to my list, continue to map, oh, excuse me, accelerate efforts to find ways to better use our gas tax revenues to pave more roads. I wanted to really boil down to the existing monies we have and derive a better understanding and better implementation of how we can make, put more pavement on the road with the existing dollars. Continue to investigate the road funding crisis. We're kind of doing that. This is a growing concern as inflation and roadwork has resulted in costs far exceeding what we receive in gas tax dollars. Currently, annual needs are two to three times what we collect. We call that the funding gap. We must better define what public safety services actually are. Not only does the sheriff provide a public portion of public safety, but there's other services, and there's been a lot of confusion. That's why this was kind of at the forefront, especially before budgeting. We think of public safety, and we only think of the sheriff, and maybe fire, but there's a lot of things we do that relate to public safety, and those are jails, prisons, courts, district attorney's office, mental health, building codes, road department, water districts, wastewater agencies, fire districts, ambulance providers, health department, medical facilities, 9/11 departments, search and rescue, emergency management, the National Guard, and many more, all factor into public safety. Work on the incessant, continuous nagging dog barking that is a growing concern that has negative impacts. Well, we're working on it. We don't have it yet, but we're working on it. Streamline and resolve co-compliance ordinances, procedures, and policies. We worked on it. We're still working on it. Employment land strategy. How do we address this critical shortfall that gets towards employment, that gets towards keeping our young people here in town, in the county with jobs? And as our population grows, we're, again, we're losing ground. Search and rescue. Search and rescue was in need of a home for their specialized equipment. When they go up on the mountain and they serve people, their, their vehicles are parked outside, some of those electronics inside are being, are susceptible to moisture damage and so forth. Two more left on my list. Focus on I-5 access to Canby, the Arnt Road Corridor, the Sunrise Corridor, I-205 and Critical Highway Projects. Our Economic Development Commission did just that and actually prioritized those, so we, the, but the EDC did a great job there. And then put the Tourism TRT Resource Distribution Presentation to use and do presentations of the affected zones as we planned, and as we, as the staff worked on, we never did that. So that's what I read a year ago, and I think that, I think we did, could not have a better showing in those areas. And transportation projects, I think Commissioner Bernard heard a little bit last night at the Impact Meeting, very good discussion at JPAC this morning with the perception out there that a lot, it's very, transportation funding is very complicated in the region. I think a lot of people assume that a lot of the projects that are, that take place in this region are independently decided or determined by JPAC or Metro. And I would say that most of the time, that's not true, actually, that they actually compile out, they take our transportation system plan that the board approved here just a few weeks ago, and they insert that into the regional transportation plan, and out of each county doing that, each jurisdiction doing that, we derive the regional transportation plan, and those projects become funded, but they need to be in the plan. That is the source. So the source of the projects, whether you're for active transportation or whether you're for light rail or whether you're for all these projects that are controversial, they are derived from the actual jurisdictions in the counties, in the cities, and factored into the plan, so that's where they come from. But I, we, we are going to have a work session, I believe, I think the chair has acknowledged a work session on the climate smart issues. It's a very complex issue, I've got some reservations about how those dollars are prioritized or perhaps on the three different scenario models that I think are really important to Clackamas County, because I don't think the model fits and it works for Clackamas County as it does other counties. So I look forward to maybe knocking some of these things out this year. Thank you.
Let me address the December 18th meeting. Was it 19th? December 19th meeting. It is true that I'm very, very lenient when it comes to testimony. We had at least 18 cards submitted, and I told everybody here, please submit your card because I'm going to cut off the time with which you can do that soon. There are at least 20 people from, let's call it ambulance companies and fire districts sitting in the audience. Nobody moved, nobody submitted a blue card. I announce it one more time, I intend to cut these off because we have a lot of people testify. If anybody wants to put a card forward, please bring it forward now. Nobody from that group moved. Then I cut it off, because how long are we supposed to wait up here for people to submit their cards, when in fact, when they walk in, they're able to see a little preamble that says, please submit your cards before this meeting starts? So there's the triple warning, one was in writing, twice orally from me, bring your cards forward. So yes, I cut it off. Not one of those 20 people sitting in the audience ever moved with two different warnings that I was going to cut it off. So again, I say that blue card is kind of magical, anytime the 20 want to return and talk, here's the card, three minutes, at, at least three minutes, depending upon how many there are. So that's the way it happened, that's the way it's going to continue. When we have a lot of cards before us, I'll make the decision, please bear in mind, I can be overruled at any time by three commissioners or a majority of those in attendance, and I abide by that. So I appreciate the sensitivity, I've never cut off anybody who wanted to talk, but as far as sitting there through two warnings and then never moving and putting a card forward, and in the case of 18 to 20 people already on the list, I'm probably not going to take that, I'm going to say I'm going to cut it off, that's the way it will continue. You know, the regional transportation plan, unfortunately for Metro, includes some assumptions. How's these? One, they assume that each county will implement the full duplication of the Oregon State Vehicle Registration Fee. So they assume in their plan that we in Clackamas County will impose $45 as a vehicle registration fee. Majority of this commission has always said, we will never do that without a vote of the people. So that assumption is assuming that the people will pass it in this county. It also assumes that I-205 will have three lanes in each direction from Oregon City to Stafford. That's a big assumption that we've been battling about a great deal and passed a resolution in regards to that and the CRC. So the regional transportation plan is, is put together by Metro the way Metro wants it to look. I was amused by a text that somebody sent me in regards to a debate last night in Tigard, Oregon. See, Tigard, Oregon has the audacity to think they should vote on the future of light rail and the Southwest Corridor. Light rail and the Southwest Corridor. Does this sound familiar? We did this in Clackamas County too. The people decided that from now on, if more light rail wants to happen in this county, we're going to vote on that. I ran on that, and we will abide by that. But a Metro councillor by the name of Craig Dirksen, former mayor of Tigard, said something tenement to this. "We live in a representative democracy. Don't tie our hands and create more red tape for us by supporting a public vote on this." Huh? Red tape is not a public vote. Red tape is red tape, but a public vote is completely separate. It's a right that's been taken away from the majority of people in the metropolitan area because of a representative democracy. We get our 3% every year on our property taxes. Each one of those property taxes has been approved by the voters, and we get a 3% raise every year, subject to, of course, the assessed value reaching the market value. We get a 3% raise. Anything outside of that, and that includes 5, 10, 15, 20, 25 million dollars additions, and that includes the Selwood Bridge and light rail, should go to the people for their decision. That's how light rail has proliferated itself throughout the metropolitan area. Metro somehow and their allies have escaped the will of the voters and decided that we know better than you. You don't need to vote on these things, you plebeians. We can take care of you through representative form of government. I think that's all wrong. And I applaud the people of Tigard, who have twice filled out 5,000 signatures from them, not from outside influences, to be able to vote on this very important matter. I do not support light rail, I will say that again and again, unless it has been authenticated by the people of the county, and that includes the people of the city who says they have to put up with it or take it or not. That is their right to do so. So it kind of, kind of ticks me off when I see this same thing replicated over and over again. The Green Line was supposed to be the magic panacea, everything was supposed to open up huge businesses, la, la, la. The ridership numbers are faulty, they were false, and they've never come true. Try Wes out in Wilsonville. Somehow these numbers were trumped up and thrown out, these are fantastic, people are going to ride this. Right now, I believe every time somebody rides that for their $2.25, we subsidize it 15 bucks. So I appreciate all their projections that come from downtown, whether it's for planning or rail, but they're all false. Every time, they're false. And now we'll throw in the CRC, great things are going to come because of the Clackamas, or the, excuse me, Columbia River Crossing, right? I don't believe it for a minute. So ladies and gentlemen, I am about representation. I ran for office on what I call the big three. The failure of this county to not allow the people to vote on the Selwood Bridge. The failure of this county to say, no, you cannot vote on urban renewal. And the failure especially, that you do not have the right to vote on light rail. And each time, this county and the, you know, the commissioners were given a lesson, a schooling, and I appreciate that, and I'll stand by that in the future. Now, enough of my dissertations for the day. I have an announcement. The first 2014 Board of County Commissioners Town Hall will be held Tuesday, February 18th at 7:00 PM at the Wilsonville Community Center located at 7965 Southwest Wilsonville Road. Now, it's also known as the Senior Center. So if you're coming into Wilsonville, you want to go east on Wilsonville Road through three traffic signals, and you'll see it on the left. It is adjacent to Old City Hall in Wilsonville, I'm, I'm sure it'll be appropriately signed. It will be hosted by the Wilsonville Chamber of Commerce. We are in the process of finalizing the remaining town halls for 2014, of which we've decided we'd have one each quarter, and they'll be held in Sandy in April, Estacada in September, and Happy Valley in November. We will have the dates and details posted soon on our website, and that again is www.clackamas.us. I want to say in conclusion, I'm very proud of this commission and the things we've accomplished this year. Many times it has not been unanimous, but that's okay. It is the will of the commission or what I call a majority consensus that we try to come to. I have lost a few of those, and I'm fine with that, we'll go on with life. But I've appreciated working with each commissioner and certainly our valued staff in bringing forward all the information that is necessary to make very appropriate decisions. So unless there's any further discussion and/or reason to hold this meeting any longer...
Actually, Chair, just one thing, the minute you did offer, just want to clarify for those listening, Tigard is not in Clackamas County, and this is a Washington County Portland project, so just for people to know that no one's violating the Clackamas County Code, and, and I do support and did support the vote on light rail, and I think that due to the expense and the cost and the diversion of those funds that goes towards things that drive our economy, that it's a wise, a wise decision to allow our voters to chime in on such a large, large expense. But that is in Washington County.
I think the public is well aware where Tigard is, it's in Washington County, and whether it's in Washington County or anyplace else, I, I think that people should be able to have the right to chime in on anything they want that affects their pocketbook. So also, the Columbia River Crossing is not in Clackamas County, but we have big business about that, whether it's in our county or not. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.